All right, welcome to City Hall. It's 6:02, kind of a late start here. This is March 18th. Mayor Eric Strumpf, welcome to our City Council chambers. Tonight we'll have a prayer led by Larry Henry and please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
...........................................................................................................................
I'd ask the clerk to please read roll.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol? Here. Henry?
Here.
Lubert?
Present.
Mahalovich?
Here.
Pope?
Here.
Prather?
Here.
Schulte?
Here.
Scrivner?
Here.
Weber?
And we have a quorum. Next on our agenda, I see here there could be a motion to change the agenda rotation to bring up something that was a little bit later in our discussion. Is there, Sean?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to move that we take up item 18, Resolutions, just after 14, to amend the agenda.
Is there a second? It's moved and seconded. Discussion on that, Drew? Normally there would be any discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. And Sean, tell me again, you put that right below 14?
That is correct.
All righty. Okay, next we have Mr. Charles Palmer. Welcome, Charles, to talk to us about Lewis and Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank all of you for your support and help in Monument Project in which we are engaged. Tonight we'll just do two things. Tell you a little bit about what happened last year in '12. I believe you have the numbers in front of you. They're down. Okay. They're down a little bit, and I think that was due to the interesting summer we had last year. That monument area really holds the heat. And then we'll talk a little bit about what's going on for this year. You have the numbers? You have any questions about those? Okay, well, we're in the process of really getting going. Our schedules for the monument and the docents who are there on Saturdays, Sundays, and holiday Mondays is set. We've had a couple of groups of schoolkids already, and a biggie scheduled in May, so we'll get some more folks there. We washed the monument, waxed it last September, and we'll do so again on the weekend of May 11, 12, excuse me, 10, 11, and 12. We wash it Friday, put wax on it Saturday, let it dry thoroughly, and polish on Sunday. If any of you haven't got anything scheduled that weekend, love to see you. We have a good time doing the whole thing. This year, something's new. It's the program. We started working on it in the latter part of '11. We got the gals rammed it through this year. We're working very closely with Office of Administration. OA is going to supply the handsmen to prune and shape the bushes and the trees, to plant flowers where they're necessary, and then pull some weeds and rake and spread mulch. I think that's going to improve things quite a bit. So that's, I'll save you a couple of minutes, Mr. Mayor. That's all we have. I appreciate the fact that we're here and the support that the council gave us in the starting years, and certainly for one of yours, Brian Pope, whose contribution at the tag end really put us over the hump. We remind, we love you, Brian. Say hi to Sharon Forrest, because we love her too. And also to Bill Lockwood and the help that OA is giving us. I don't know what we'd do without them. They are terrific. So with that, fold my tent and put the oars and the locks and head up the river. Any questions that you might have?
Charles, let me ask you this. Obviously, as a council, I know we can do things. What can the public do to help you? When is your next workday, so to speak?
What can the public do to help us? Well, we'd love to see anybody who would like to come down and help us wash and wax, wax and polish, rather. That's a fun time. It doesn't take very long, hour and a half. We haven't planned any events for the coming year. We had one last year, the Progs, the two Progs came back down the river, and we had a deal with them for a couple of days. They were open. We'd love for the public to come. Education is the name of our game, and we love to spread that as far as we can. Other than that, I'd, well, like some new members. If the public is interested, there's an ad in the paper today in that regular column in the paper saying that we're looking for volunteers, and we can use them. We really could. It's a great thing for learning about the Louisiana Purchase and the Lewis and Clark Expedition.
Great. Charles, thanks for being here again. You always do such a good job. Dr. Pope?
I just wanted to remind everyone that we're fast approaching, it doesn't seem possible, but we're fast approaching the fifth anniversary of the monument in June of this year, and so hopefully we'll be able to get something going for that, one of those weekends that commemorate the fifth anniversary.
A slap on my wrist. I should have mentioned that. Yes, we are working on it. We're putting some stuff together to try to see what we can do to offer, and that will be an event for this year. I'm sorry. Apologize.
All right. Anything else from the council? Bob?
Just a quick question. You mentioned people to help you, and I was curious even before you said that, but how many do you have that on a regular basis help out down there?
There is about, I'd say about 25 on our mailing list, but of that, as a most volunteer organization, you've got a corps of about 10 who do all the legwork and visit all the meetings on the first Thursday of every month.
First Thursday of every month? Where do you meet?
First Thursday of every month. We hold the meetings at the library. We have a small room off the kids' section, and runs from 5:30 until 7:00, and we're very prompt on our time.
5:30 to 7:00, so if someone wants to get involved, they just need to show up?
Absolutely. We've got a little handout for them to tell them about some of the, about the expedition and the, let's see, oh yeah, the list of officers and some general information on the organization itself.
Thank you for what you do and for what your crew does.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Charles, thanks a lot. Thanks again for coming. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, next, I'd like to introduce our Public Works Director, Mr. Roger Schwartz.
Thank you, Mayor. It's an honor this evening that we have in the audience with us a lot of employees wearing the orange and lime green and yellow outfits that are our employees that help us in our snow removal efforts, and we'd like to recognize them. But I'd like to share with you a little bit of what happened in our snow removal efforts this winter. You know, Mother Nature was great to us for quite a while this winter, but winter definitely came on February the 21st, and in two weeks there, we had to put a lot of effort in on snow removal. On the 21st, we received seven inches of snow that day. It snowed, it sleeted, it snowed again, and the crews really had a hard time keeping up with how hard the snow was coming. But once it did finally let up, they made great progress. Our crews did wind up working 16 hours that day, and they did have all of the streets open before they went home that evening. We would have liked to have done a little more work that day, but there was another storm coming, so they had to get home to get some rest. So that is what we did, and on Friday, they came in at 5:00 that morning and worked through the day, but we still didn't have all of the streets widened as much as we've done in past years, because we were concerned that if we did more widening, we were going to plow a lot of people's driveways shut again that had done a lot of shoveling to get them open. But Mother Nature wasn't done. On February the 26th, we got another storm, another seven inches of snow, and on that day, our snowplow drivers came in at midnight, and they worked 14 hours till about 3:00 PM in the afternoon. And again, by that time, they had all of the roads back open again, and there were even larger winrows of snow along the side of the street, as everyone can no doubt remember. And we spent the next day after that widening again, but again, we chose not to plow everybody's driveway shut, so a little bit different than we've done in past years. We didn't move the snow back as much as we normally would, simply because of the volume and those kind of things. But then we also began hauling snow the following day out of the downtown area, but due to our budget situation, we only chose to work regular hours hauling that snow instead of hauling it night to try to save us a little bit of money. It was a busy couple of weeks for certainly our street department, the wastewater staff that helps us, our parking crews that are involved in snow removal here at the city office here, as well as all of the sidewalks in the downtown area, but also the parks department, the police department, transit departments, all were involved in cleaning snow off of the facilities they have. Just to give you a little numbers, during these two weeks of snowstorms, our street crews worked 1,093 hours on snow removal. We used 1,165 tons of salt, and the total cost for materials, labor, and equipment for, this includes a total of 54 people that are involved in these operations, was $140,300. And believe it or not, the amount of overtime that we expended was $10,600 that was reported on timesheets. So very little overtime actually got accumulated, because a lot of the crews did take comp time, and in Public Works, we do, our process has always been that if they accumulate that comp time, they use it off during the year so that we don't have that burden carrying us forward. So with that, I'd like to ask the mayor to come down and recognize these crews. We're going to ask them to come up one at a time, and they're in alphabetical order, and we start with our street superintendent, Mr. Louis Alber. You have to go up there. He's going to give you something. The next guy is one of our street supervisors, Mr. Eddie Bates. And next is another supervisor, Mr. Todd Logan. And next is Dennis Martin. And a gentleman that runs our central maintenance operations, Mr. Sean Stumpy. Wes is one of our mechanics. And now to our parking group headed by James Wilson.
Nobody knows me by James.
And now we have the guys that come from our wastewater department that also help us in snow removal. Russ Racker is one of our supervisors. And Vince Schuster, another supervisor. And yes, he and Louis are related.
So how is that house?
Mr. Mayor, that's our list, and we thank you for recognizing all of those this evening.
Roger, I guess about 15 years ago, Darla and I had a chance to build a house in an existing neighborhood, and we chose the ski slope of Yorktown. And for 15 years, we've never not been able to get in or out. The blizzard, what we call the landwear blizzard back in '11, I think John might be here, but that was a little bit tight, but we did at least make it to the grocery store, so to be on that steep hill. Guys, thank you very much. All the departments that help out in what they do. Okay, next, under public hearings, we'll have first reading of Public Bill 2012-147.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the city of Jefferson by rezoning .97 acres from RS2 Low Density Residential to RA2 High Density Residential for land addressed as 2611 Southridge Drive, described as part of the northwest quarter of Section 23, Township 44 North, Range 12 West, Jefferson City, Coal County, Missouri.
Janice McMillan.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to ask Greg Reese to advance the slides for me, since the mouse isn't working. Thank you. This public hearing is being held as a culmination of our public notice process. It includes publication of a public notice in the newspaper in advance of the planning and zoning meeting and in advance of the city council meeting. We also notify by letter adjoining unaffected property owners within 185 feet, and we also post a sign on the property announcing the date and time of the public hearing. This particular bill involves a rezoning of property located at 2611 Southridge Drive. Property consists of slightly less than one acre. Current zoning is RS2 Low Density Residential, which is a single-family district. Property owners propose to rezone it to RA2 High Density Residential for purposes of constructing a fourplex. This area is in a neighborhood that consists of mostly multifamily dwellings. There are about seven single-family homes in this particular vicinity. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this rezoning request at their meeting on February 14th and recommended that it be approved. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff tonight on 2012-147? Seeing none at this point in time, we'll open up the hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of 2012-147? Anyone to speak opposed of 2012-147? At this point in time, we will close that portion of the hearing and open it up for council debate. Seeing no debate, roll call, please.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
And motion passes. Next, we'll have number seven minutes of reports filed here at City Hall. I think that speaks for itself. If you would like to be a member of a board or commission, you can go to our website, which is jeffcitymo.org, or you can contact our HR Director, Ms. Gail Strope. Next, we'll have council committee reports, and first is the Admin Committee chaired by Councilwoman Carrie Carroll.
Thank you. Administration Committee has not met since our last council meeting. We'll be meeting next Wednesday, March 27th, at 8:00 AM across the hall. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Sean Schulte, who chairs our Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. The Finance Committee's next meeting is Tuesday, March 26, 7:30 AM across the hall. Thank you.
All righty. Thanks, Sean. Now, next, we have Public Safety Committee, and this is chaired by Dr. Brian Pope.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have not met since the last council meeting. Our meeting for March will be the 28th, following the brown bag, and that'll be a busy week, 26th, 27th, and 28th. We'll all meet that week, so that'll be it for public safety.
All righty. Thank you, Dr. Pope, for what you do. Appreciate it. Public Works and Planning Committee is chaired by Mr. Bob Scrivner. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Works and Planning Committee has not met since the last council meeting. Our next meeting will be scheduled for March 21st at 7:30 AM across the hall. That'll be this Thursday. We'd invite the public to attend the meeting if they'd like to.
Thank you, Bob. Next to have is Liaison Committees. Any liaisons this evening? All right, seeing nothing there. No appointments under number nine, nothing under 10 or 11. Moving on to number 12, Gloria Inlow. Is Gloria here?
Yes.
Oh, there you are. We're underneath number 12, and I think you're here to speak. And as you know from pastimes here, Gloria, please give us your name and address, and limit your remarks to five minutes. Welcome. Hope you're having a good night.
Well, I'm here from JCTV. As manager of JCTV, we're at Lincoln University, and I really don't have anything that I need to update the council on. I updated the council at the last meeting, and we talked a little bit about our fundraising efforts and the like, and I am just here to answer any questions anyone might have about progress of JCTV or the vote tonight.
Any questions about the council? I have one question. I know we've talked about this personally at the fundraiser and other places that I see you. What are the odds over time of getting on what we call the big birds, the Dishes and Indirects? How is that, and where does that stand?
You know, it's just an ongoing process right now. To give anyone a channel, Dish and Direct would have to free up bandwidth to give anyone a channel, and right now, they're not willing to do that for a public access station, but that's something we're going to continue to go back to them year after year to see if we can do.
Okay. Thank you, Gloria. Any other questions for Gloria tonight? Bob?
Gloria, I don't know that I have seen, and maybe I just have overlooked, but could you maybe report to us, or at least update us on your fundraising efforts so far and where you're at on that as far as funds raised?
The latest I have is in the past four months, we've raised about $6,000. We have another influx coming in, and I haven't got those to our finance department yet, though.
Okay. Thank you. And are those pledges, or is that actually cash?
That's actual cash received. Yeah.
I think there was a question over here. Someone, Ralph, here first, I believe.
Gloria, did you say $6,000?
Uh huh.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, Bill Lubert had the same question, $6,000. Dr. Pope, did you, is there a question there? I'm sorry. Okay. Anything else over here? Gloria, thank you very much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Moving on, that takes care of number 12. Consent Agenda, at this point in time, will entertain a motion to approve. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, roll call? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. No bids over $50,000 at this point in time. Due to the change that was made in the agenda earlier, we will now have reading of Resolution 2012-24.
Authorizing the city councilor to terminate the agreement with Lincoln University dated August 24, 2007 pertaining to JCTV.
Discussion. Do you have anything to add, Drew?
No. The council wanted me to explain it. The reason for it is that the city council allotted $110,000 for funding. That would get us through June in order to terminate the contract so that we don't, oh, we wouldn't go over our budget line item. This would authorize the termination of the contract. It's a hundred, it's prorated, so this would get us out even.
Comments on the resolution? Dr. Pope?
To clarify, when would this take effect?
June. The end of June.
So you would do the notice to go by this 90-day notice?
Correct. I would send the notice that in 90 days, we're terminating the contract.
Okay.
Ralph?
Drew, will the $110,000 have been expended at the end of June?
Yes. They billed us once. They imagine they will be billing us again soon, and that would take us- that would take us through June.
And the contract requires a 90-day notice?
Yes.
Is it necessary to terminate this contract at this time? Or actually, what I'm wondering is, with a 90-day notice, if we back that up, October, October, September, August, we could terminate this at the end of July and have the same result, couldn't we?
I don't believe so. In fact, I brought my little map. The contract runs from November 1st to October 31st, so we've got three quarters, or three thirds, I guess, four months apiece, November, December, January, and February. For those services, we've already paid them. March, April, May, and June would be the second third, and that's the rest of our $55,000 we've got budgeted. So July, August, September, and October, we're unfunded for in the budget. Now, the council could, of course, amend it, but we wouldn't need to, it's not that the 90 days is needed to prevent the contract from rolling over. It's that the 90 days now is needed in order to prevent an obligation more than we have budgeted for.
Right. And so if, so if we do not advise Lincoln University of our intent to terminate the contract in 90 days, the contract would, if not that, then the contract would obligate us for July and August and September?
The, yes, we would be obligated until we terminate it. So if, for example, we didn't pass it this week but passed it in two weeks, we would owe the 55 plus two weeks of the prorated contract of $165,000.
So if we do not act on this, we would be obligated for the remainder of the contract, which would be $55,000?
Correct. If we do nothing with JCTV, that is correct, we would owe another 55,000 that we have not budgeted.
Right. Thank you.
Other questions on my left. Rick Prather.
Just want another clarification. We have another amendment out there, and that is actually to change the, possibly change the dollar amount.
That's correct. If the council doesn't pass the resolution, there is another bill on the agenda, and what that bill would do is to essentially authorize us to amend the contract, reducing it by $55,000 for the current year. Thus, we would not go over the line item budget.
All right, thank you.
Any questions or comments over here? Bob?
I think we could, we could take that action to amend that, the contract, but you couldn't do it unilaterally. I mean, we could take the action, but if Lincoln chose not to sign a new contract, then our only option would be to either pay the additional monies or terminate.
That is correct.
And in order to meet the 90-day obligation, the termination would have to be voted on tonight, or is there any wiggle room?
The 90 days to avoid the line, specifically going over the line item, it would be at the end of March. So while we have some other days to have some, you know, meetings if we need to, this would be the last regularly scheduled council meeting.
So there's nothing to preclude us, not suggesting that that's an action that we would want to take, or even that Lincoln would want to take. But if we did cancel the remainder of this contract, there's nothing to preclude us from negotiating a new contract of, you know, if we decided we wanted to do that for next year.
That is correct.
Thank you. It makes more sense that we would want to change the amount to the, reducing it by $55,000, which is what we decided during the budget process. I'm not sure why the contract wasn't amended at that time, because I believe it should have been. Maybe it was just an oversight, and so really, by reducing the amount to $55,000, we're just doing what Lincoln and JCTV expected and what the council had decided during the budget process. I'll be voting no on the resolution, and not for financial reasons, but because I would have, I would prefer that we meet with Lincoln University and JCTV. We have a steering committee that's been meeting monthly. Councilman Larry Henry is our liaison with that. I just think that it can be done in a more tactful manner rather than putting a resolution. I know we want to give them notice, and clearly, we'll give them, we can still do it within the 90 days. I just don't feel, I don't feel comfortable when I think about our relationship with Lincoln University, and we've had this for so many years. I know it's a tough budget time, but this is not, it's not for budget. It's more for the respect that we should have with Lincoln and sit down with them, and they understand we're in a budget crunch. However, we have set goals for them for fundraising. I don't think that the time is to have Gloria at the stand and say, tell us your numbers, when we really haven't told her to come here prepared to give us their goals and their fundraising, and also what Lincoln University is planning to bring to the table. They're getting ready to have new leadership themselves. They have a new president coming on board, and perhaps the council has been talking to them, and I don't, I don't want to feel like, well, Lincoln probably assumes, or Lincoln already knows. Well, I'm sure they do. I just don't like the manner that it's being done in a resolution form, and I would feel certain that over the next week or two, we could meet with Lincoln and get them to the table and explain, here's our financial situation. Of course, we perhaps can't contribute to JCTV, but how could we maintain our relationship? What are they willing to bring to the table? Because the 10 of us sitting here really don't know what Lincoln is able or willing to bring to the table, or what they would expect from us. My bottom line for me is just our relationship with Lincoln and maintaining that, even if we can't fund JCTV. The point is, how can we maintain our relationship? And other questions about JCTV and what it means as far as their equipment that's in here is owned by JCTV. People say, well, I can still watch it online. Well, that's JCTV employees are filming it, so I don't know if you can watch it. I mean, I highly doubt you can watch it online when we have their equipment and their employees doing this service. So I think there's still some discussion and questions, and I just want to do it in the most respectful manner. That's why I'll be voting no tonight on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Sean?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to clarify for the general public and for the council why the resolution was put forward tonight, and also why I requested that the resolution be moved up in the agenda in front of the bills being introduced. During the last couple of weeks during our budget discussions and trying to come up with monies for the shortfall, the question was asked, what about JCTV? You know, there's $110,000 there. What do we need to do with regard to that? And has been indicated this evening already, that money has already been allocated and has already been spent. The purpose of the resolution was just in fairness to JCTV, in fairness to our staff, the city staff, and in fairness to the residents, we need to make a decision. Are we going to fund JCTV or not? And by putting it off until tonight, if we pass resolution, or Bill 2012-145, we're basically stating that we're going to amend their contract to $110,000. To me, that is a clear signal to JCTV that that's exactly what we're going to do. We intend on funding JCTV for $110,000. But yet, there's questions during budget discussions, well, what about JCTV? Can we save that money? So in fairness to them, they have a budget process coming up. Our city administrator has a budget process coming up that he's going to start looking at 2014. We need to make, as a council, we need to make a decision. Are we going to fund JCTV or not? And that's the sole purpose of the resolution, is so that we can, we can let them know what our intent is as a council. And I moved it up in the agenda because I didn't want to quote-unquote "hold the council hostage," and if I withdraw Bill 2012-145, that leaves no other options for the council. Then we would have to reintroduce the bill. That's not fair, so I wanted to move the resolution up so everybody could, could think about it and make a vote whether or not we want to proceed in 2014 with this $110,000. That doesn't mean that it can't be discussed later, but in my opinion, we've been through this, and we need to make a decision and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Dr. Pope?
Thank you, Sean, for your consideration and getting it in the proper order. I don't necessarily think that this vote is a vote for or against public access television. I think this is a, this is a finally opportunity for us, because in the last budget cycle, we budgeted so that we dovetailed our fiscal years. We never had the opportunity in the budget cycle previously to make this decision, because this contract always came up in a staggered manner to where it was cut and dried by the time we got to our contract, by our fiscal year. We have finally now the opportunity to make a decision. I don't view this as a decision against public access television, but in numbers of years that I sat on the position of liaison, this is not a new issue, that we have not gotten what we thought we should from this contract. This is a decision whether we want to renew this contract in the future. We've got the dates dovetailed now. We can make this decision, and in the future, a future council can decide to put public access television out for bid if they so choose. There are a number of organizations in this community that might be willing to bid this project, and we might be able to bring additional technology to the table. So I view this as we're going to end this contract, or have the opportunity to, and, and maybe more will come to the table later on in who offers us the opportunity to give us public access television. And the discussions, the discussion that this is unfair or blindsiding our current contractor, I think is without merit, that discussion. We have had discussions for many, many, many years, both council elected people and staff people, that we thought the public deserved more for this money. So I'm grateful that before I'm off this council, I am able to make a decision that we open it up to other bidders in the future, if a future council sees fit.
Ralph?
Drew, are you aware, or perhaps Nathan, have the, have the leaders gotten together with university leaders to discuss this contract?
I would answer that yes. I've spoke with Connie Homacher a couple different times, obviously Gloria, and I've also talked to Dr. Rome, and I shared a phone call with Connie today, and she obviously knows, you can look in the media here lately and see what we're up against as far as 13, and I told her, I said, I hate to see it in this way, and I can look at her and say this too. If the council would vote this yes, and it would terminate the contract, I don't know if things are completely over. Just with the current funding, I'm not sure what we could do. And I told Dr. Rome the same thing, basically. So I think as far as reaching out in leadership, Connie, would you agree we've done that? Yeah. Thank you.
Well, making this decision tonight, I know I'm hearing and you're saying that you're, you've met with people, you've made phone calls, whatever. That information hasn't been shared or communicated with the council, and we're faced with making this decision. Like I said, this isn't about the financial or the budget. This is about knowing the information, and typically, we take these to a committee and discuss. We have the four standing committees. We can really have a discussion, or possibly a work session, and really get the facts and truly know what Lincoln University is prepared to bring to the table and how the efforts are going. We've asked them to set goals, and they were big goals, but we really don't know if they met them or how close they are. So I just don't know where the discussion is, and in my opinion, it's not something that should be brought forth with the resolution. So I would ask Councilman Schulte why it wasn't brought forward to a committee so that we could go through, like we do with everything, instead of pulling this out without having that chance for the information and discussion.
Yeah, sorry.
Thanks, Mayor.
I thought Drew was getting ready to say something. That's why I looked that way and said your name. So Mr. Schulte has the floor.
Councilwoman Carrie, with all due respect, I think I just explained the reason that I put forth the resolution, and I'll let it stand at that. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion on Resolution 2012-24? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Carroll?
No.
Henry?
No.
Lubert?
Yes.
Mahalovich?
No.
Pope?
Aye.
Prather?
No.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Weber?
No.
Bray?
No.
That is a no. Six to four, correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on. We have next, bills to be introduced. We'll have first reading of 2012-149.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, deleting from the code the temporary restriction of pedestrian and bicycle traffic, which is now expired.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back in 1998, there was a bridge construction project that went from March to October of 1998, and at that time, the council codified a restriction on the bridge traffic. That's, repair's been complete for a very long time, and we just noticed this was still in the code, so this would delete that article out of the code.
Okay. Any questions by the council staff? Okay, seeing none, 2012-150.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with the housing authority of the city of Jefferson, Missouri regarding sewer service deposits.
Mr. Schwartz?
Thank you, Mayor. The city does require deposits now for our sewer funds, and the housing authority came and appeared before the administration committee requesting that we not charge their folks that are coming into their housing for this deposit. In exchange, the housing authority was willing to pick up up to 90 days of unpaid sewer bill by one of their tenants. So this would allow the city to enter into an agreement that we would not charge their tenants for this deposit, but if there's any bills owed when they leave, they would pick up up to 90 days of this cost. The staff here does not allow bills to go past 90 days anymore. That doesn't happen, so we feel good about this agreement.
All right, any questions on 2012-150 of Roger? All right, moving on, we'll have first reading of 2012-151.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement for joint funding of the household hazardous waste collection facility with the county of Coal.
Janice McMillan.
Thank you, Mayor. Our household hazardous waste facility is operated in cooperation with Coal County. This grant was received to start up a household hazardous waste facility in 2010, and in a little over two and a half years of collections, this facility has collected over 28,000 pounds of household hazardous waste. The agreement and bill that's before you this evening would authorize an agreement with Coal County to jointly fund this facility. Prior to this date, it's been funded by the grant. With the grant ending in 2012, we're obligated to continue funding for a period of time. Allied Waste contributes $5,500 annually to help run this facility and provide the processing and transportation costs, and the agreement that's before you this evening would allow Coal County to contribute toward that funding as well.
Okay, any questions to Janice? Janice, thank you.
Thank you.
2012-152, first reading, please.
An ordinance amending the code of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, assigning the duty... To administrate banners on utility poles to Public Works.
We noticed in the code that the banners on our street poles are actually listed under the Planning and Protective Services Department, when really, it's Public Works that has the bucket trucks and actually does all the service for putting up the banners. So we're recommending that it be changed to Public Works being the responsible department for those.
Okay, any questions there? Okay, any questions there? Next, we'll have first reading of 2012-151, I'm sorry, 152? Which one did we miss? 152. The pre-treatment program.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Barr Engineering Company to evaluate and provide recommendations for sewer pre-treatment codes.
Mr. Schwartz.
Thank you again, Mayor.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
The state of Missouri requires that we set local limits for industries to discharge to our sanitary sewer system. And this includes things like the amount of grease that you can let enter our system as well as things like soap and those things. We are requesting to enter into this contract with Barr Engineering, who is the firm that was selected at a cost of sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars to provide us assistance in setting up these limits. Ultimately, there would be a bill come to the council to actually get limits approved. But today, we don't have staff available or we don't have staff with expertise, I should say, in this type of thing. That's why we're seeking this assistance. It is paid out of the wastewater fund.
Thank you, Roger. Any questions of Roger on 152? All right, moving on, 2012-153, first read. Actually, we didn't have the reading, or did you have the reading? And you already did your part? Okay, so we just missed 52. Okay, anything else on bills introduced, clerk? None? All right, third reading of 2012-144, please.
An ordinance amending the code of the city of Jefferson, Missouri pertaining to charitable corporations obtaining a business license.
Drew.
This bill would exempt 501(c)(3) not-for-profit charitable organizations from paying for the license fee so long as they don't pay sales tax, which mirrors our practice.
Okay, any questions of staff on 144? Mr. Weber.
Drew, would the organizations, would they have to do the permit every year?
They would, whatever, they would still have to file all the same paperwork as everybody else. They just wouldn't necessarily have to file a fee. So we would still have contact information and be able to know what they're doing.
Do we inspect those organizations from fire safety?
They would, it depends what they're, the answer is probably yes. If they're a business, if they've got a business office inside the city, then yes.
Any other questions on 144? All right, seeing none, debate? Go ahead, sir.
When you refer to it, charitable corporation, does that include any corporation that would have the tax exempt status? What is it, 503(c)?
It would necessitate that they have a 501(c)(3) status with the Feds. So there's not-for-profit corporations in Missouri, but that's not sufficient.
Well, I'm just thinking, would that be like, for instance, the Hospital Association, Farm Bureau? You know, I mean, those, at least parts of Farm Bureau has that tax exempt status. And there are other large corporations that would have tax exempt status.
Most of those are not 501(c)(3)'s, they're some other number.
They have another tax exempt status. So they wouldn't be, that's my question, are those included in this particular ordinance?
It depends what they are. So probably, the answer to your question is probably not. But it would depend what their actual exemption, what their tax status is with the IRS. So when the person applies, they would provide the proof of their status.
But this only applies to that tax.
That is correct, yes.
Any other questions for staff on 144? Mr. Bray.
Drew, what is the amount of the business license?
It would depend what their license is. Most of them would be fifty dollar, probably non, I forgot what it's called, non-categorized or something like that.
Do the, Councilman Weber brought up a good point, I thought, I want to follow up on that. The nonprofit businesses versus the for-profit businesses, do they receive the same oversight, inspection, and so on and so forth?
Yes. So they would not be paying that if this ordinance goes through now. Most of them are, there's not a lot. I think maybe Jason can answer, but like businesses that are inspected every other year is our goal, is that correct?
We typically have about a sixteen, eighteen month annual inspection calendar for businesses inside the city. If a new business comes to town, prior to the business license being issued, we do an inspection of those businesses also.
Most of the other things are, there's not a lot of time involved in the rest of the licensing process.
Would a nonprofit not receive a fire or safety inspection if they did not have this business license?
They would require an inspection once they moved into the building, since it is a public building.
They would require one inspection?
Well, they would get their annual inspection once they moved into the building, as we would a new business. And then they would receive an inspection on the calendar once every sixteen, eighteen months.
If, if or if not, they have a license, whether or not they have a license?
Doesn't matter.
One of the good things we've had happen recently is kind of GIS being able to coordinate between finance and fire. And so they can now tell fire, we've got, we're talking to each other. And so fire knows when new businesses come in and where they are and where the locations are. So they're going out there and making sure all these new businesses have their inspections and such.
So there would be no compromise in public safety of a business, of a nonprofit business?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Scrivner.
Do we have any idea how many businesses this would include by any chance, any estimate?
We don't know, we were estimating less than ten. Now, that's just an estimate because we don't know exactly where they are. It's just the ones that we kind of know have come in and applied and have been told they didn't need it in the past. But once we figured out that's what was happening, we need to come to council and clarify it.
So in reality, the ordinance has said they do, but we were either misinterpreting or just mistaken and we're not charging.
That's correct. We would estimate, again, with full disclosure that we don't know for sure, but a couple hundred dollars a year, three, four, five, maybe at the tops, is what this would cost the council. But again, it could be more, since we don't know for sure.
It just almost seems counterintuitive to be eliminating a business license fee whenever we're
In fairness, this kind of came up about six months ago and drifted for a while. So things have certainly changed since this first came up at staff level.
Thank you.
Any other questions on 144?
I should say, if this fails, we certainly will and have already started to notify anyone that comes in that they would owe the business license fee.
Okay, any other debate on 144? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Henry?
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
No.
Weber?
Aye.
Bray?
No.
Carol?
Aye.
Motion fails. I'm sorry, motion passes, my bad. Been one of those messed up nights, it's been Monday all day. Drew? How do I ask for a moment of privilege so I can ask you a question? Because I'm not sure how to ask it. Oh, Nathan's got the answer. How about a five-minute recess? Thank you. Councilman Scrivner? All right, once again, welcome to City Hall. This is round two of the March eighteenth meeting. Next, we will have a third reading of 2012-145.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an amendment to an agreement with Lincoln University.
Mr. Hilbert.
This is round two of the JCTV discussion. This would be a contract amendment. It would do two things, although I understand there was a substitute. I think at some point I sent email to motion around. But what it does in its current portion is it changes the compensation to a hundred and ten thousand dollars and changes the termination clause from ninety days to thirty days. Again, we cannot unilaterally do this, we would have to send that to JCTV. And I did, early on in this, sent it to Gloria and I think she told us that she sent it to higher reps as well. This would not bind the council in the next budget year. However, again, if we, if the council chooses not to renew it at its current rate, we would need to notify Lincoln ninety days in advance of November first. So that would be October, September, August first, essentially. So that, if it is the will of the council not to fund this next year, mayor's talking.
The clerk is telling me that she does not have a substitute.
I, it was just a motion.
At one time, was there one maybe going to come up and it just hasn't, is that the deal?
Yeah, I think Councilman Mahalovich had mentioned wanting to do it, or maybe it was someone else.
Of course, an amendment could be done tonight.
Yes, it would just be, as I understand it, they want to take out the change in the thirty days notice. So if that's the will of the council, someone could make a motion to delete paragraph two of the amendment, of the amended contract.
Okay. Okay, discussion on 2012-145, Sean.
Mayor, I had made the commitment to the council at a previous meeting that I would offer an amendment to change that to ninety days.
Okay.
Second?
There's an amendment and a second on the floor to change the wording to reflect a ninety-day window for termination? Is that correct?
Yes, that is what's in the current language of the contract.
With that, discussion on the amendment as stated. Ralph.
Drew, that language is in the existing contract?
That is correct.
So it says ninety days now.
Yes.
You see where I'm going?
Yes, it would be cleanest in my mind to simply move to amend paragraph two of the amended contract. So what it would show then is, if you flip to, you've got the ordinance and you flip to the actual contract, paragraph two of that would just go away. So the only amendment to the contract would be a hundred and ten, changing the compensation to a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
So we really don't need to talk about ninety days?
Well, you do.
So would, do we need someone to withdraw a motion or withdraw an amendment?
If you, the cleanest version would be for Councilman Schulte withdraw that and withdraw the second.
A withdraw.
And then make a motion.
And second, okay.
And then make a motion.
And you'd like a motion to read?
A motion to delete paragraph two of the amended contract.
So moved.
And? And a second?
And that would have the effect of leaving it at ninety days.
So basically, it's still ninety days. What's changed is that it's a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
That's correct.
Per year.
And certainly, Lincoln is aware that that's been the amount we've had budgeted all along.
And that could also be changed next year as part of the 2014 process.
It could. The contract, if we passed it as amended, would roll over at the beginning of August, ninety days from November first. Ninety days preceding November first.
Okay. Bob, Scrivner.
So the first paragraph is amending paragraph six and essentially by saying a hundred and ten thousand, it's just matching what we've budgeted for 2013 so that the contract reads the same as the amount budgeted.
That is correct.
And the amount expended to date.
That is correct.
Okay, so what we would be doing is trying to preclude the council from spending any more money on this item than what has been budgeted.
That is correct.
Okay. So paragraph two, which has, currently reads that it is thirty days written notice, the intent of that was to give the council and Lincoln University more time to consider options, et cetera, more time to communicate or whatever, kind of what Councilman, or Councilwoman Carroll had been suggesting that we should do, is that correct?
That is correct. If it passed with the thirty days in it, then you would just have to notify them October first.
And the reason that that.
If you need to cancel the contract.
The reason that that might be a better solution than leaving the ninety days in there is because with the resolution that failed earlier, in essence, if these, this time drags on and notice is not given on a timely basis, we ultimately, if Lincoln would choose to enforce the contract, we're ultimately obligating ourselves to additional expenditure of funds in 2013, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so if you want to have time to debate and wiggle room, it might be good to defeat this attempt to delete the thirty-day language.
That is correct, but of course, Lincoln would have to agree with that as well to make it effective.
I understand, I understand, but they have to agree on the hundred and ten thousand also.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other debate? Or questions of staff? You just said Lincoln would have to agree, is that right? How long do they have to do that?
Well, they would have as long as they need to. The contract will stay in effect until modified. Certainly, if they sit on it too long, staff would probably have to bring back that resolution to terminate it because we'll be going over a line item budget.
Okay. Any questions of the council on how 2012-145, how that amendment would currently read? Why don't you do that one more time, Drew?
If, and we have not yet voted on the amendment. But if the amendment passes, it would just, it would say, you know, this amendment made such and such a date, March twenty thirteen, by and between the city of Jefferson and the state of Missouri as the curators of Lincoln. The amendment is of August twenty-ninth, two thousand and seven is amended as follows. Number one, paragraph six A is deleted and replaced with the following compensation. City agrees to pay Lincoln the sum of one hundred and ten thousand dollars per year payable on two semi-annual installments. Then it would go down to, in all other respects, the contract dated August twenty-ninth, two thousand and seven shall remain in full force and effect.
Any questions of staff from the council? Seeing none, I feel you're ready to vote on the amendment. Roll call, please.
Lubert?
Mr. Mayor, before we vote.
Sorry, sir.
I just want to be real clear, because it's titled amendment, we would be voting on the motion to amend.
Okay.
And just want to make sure everybody knows what they're voting on. If that passes, then we'll vote on the contract, the ordinance which has an amended contract in it.
Thank you. Ralph?
Do I understand correctly that we're voting on the amendment to delete, eliminate paragraph two?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Lubert?
No.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Pope?
No.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
No.
Scrivner?
No.
Weber?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Motion passes. Six to four. Okay, now we'll vote on the ordinance as amended. 2012-145, questions of Drew? Comments or debate from council? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
And motion passes. Next, we'll have 2012-146, third reading, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Stockman Construction Corporation for the three hundred block West Ashley Street Stormwater and Sanitary Sewer and seven hundred block of Southwest Boulevard Stormwater Project.
Roger.
Thank you, Mayor. We took bids on a combination project, both a stormwater pipe replacement on Ashley Street and also a pipe replacement on Southwest Boulevard. And then there's also a piece of sewer line that is right adjacent to the stormwater pipe on Ashley Street that's part of this project. The low bid was submitted by Stockman. They were the lowest out of eight bidders. The total contract amount is two hundred and ten thousand, seven twenty-eight, which a hundred and eight thousand, five fifty-two of that is coming from the stormwater fund and a hundred and two thousand, two hundred and five comes from the wastewater fund. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions of Roger on 2012-146? Seeing none, debate by the council? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Pope?
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivener.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Carol.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
And motion passes. Next, we'll have third reading of twenty-twelve, one forty-eight.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri amending the two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen budget.
And to tell us more is Mr. Betts. Bill, welcome back. Thank you, sir.
As the council knows, we had about a one-point-six, almost one-point-seven-million-dollar shortfall. We've been working for the last several weeks to come up with budget cuts. Last Thursday, we met, and some additional budget cuts were offered, and a sheet was offered. I have copies, if anyone in the council needs one, if they don't have one, I can certainly hand those out now. Looks like everyone has one. I'm willing to go over the cuts on the board, if you'd like, or we can just go with what we had on Thursday, that you've seen everything, and I'll answer any questions that you might have about those cuts as well.
Any questions of Bill or Nathan? Sean.
Mayor, I believe I need to offer an amendment to that bill that incorporates Exhibit A that was handed out on Thursday, which includes the additional hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars in, in cuts.
Okay. Is there a second to that amendment? Okay, discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Bray.
Aye.
Carol.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivener.
Aye.
Weber.
Uh, motion passes. Next, we'll go into twenty-twelve, one forty-eight, as amended, a discussion. Bob.
I guess this is a discussion or question, actually, of, you ask if we need a copy. There hasn't been any changes since Thursday.
No changes since Thursday, no, sir.
Discussion by council on twenty-twelve, one forty-eight, as amended, with attachment A. Seeing none, debate? Roll call, please.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivener.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Carol.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
And motion passes. Next, we'll move into the informal calendar, and I would ask that sponsor, Ms. Carol, what her thoughts are on twenty-twelve, one thirty-five, and one thirty-six while we're here.
I would like to pull those both off the informal calendar and vote, please.
All right, thank you, Carrie. Clerk will now have third reading of one thirty-five.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri submitting a proposed amendment to the charter of the city of Jefferson to allow elections in February and all other dates allowed in Missouri statutes.
Uh, Drew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This would put a vote to the people to allow elections on any date allowed by, in statute, and also all the dates we have now. So, it gives us February, essentially, and we do have a substitute, I believe, that's going to be proposed, to put this ballot on the next April election, so not next month, but one year from now. The reason being, we didn't have any other issues to go in August, so it didn't seem cost-effective to hold an election just for this. And I think our last election in February cost us twenty-seven dollars a vote, I believe is what it did, and it's three hundred voters or something like that. Marvin gave us the actual number.
Like you said, in March, maybe.
Oh, March, I'm sorry, February, man, March.
Okay.
So, we'll need a motion for the substitute.
Okay, is there a motion for the substitute? Is there a second? All right, it's been moved and seconded, that we accept the substitute discussion on that issue? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Bray.
Aye.
Carol.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivener.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
All right, we will now vote on the original ordinance as substituted, discussion. Ralph?
Drew, what's the downside of this?
I really don't see any downside at all. The council is not obligated to utilize the February election if they don't choose to. I know that Mr. Register has some misgivings about whether it's authorized currently, but if we've got it in our charter, then probably in a few months or a year, it'll be cleared up and we'll have free use of it. I particularly see it useful as annexation, because you can do a February-April election and save a lot of money rather than August-November. If the next bill fails and we have to continue to have primary elections, then potentially the council could put it on, could put that back to February and April. Now, I should point out, just for clarity's sake, that that can't happen until next year, so next year, no matter what happens, we'll be doing it in March, if we have a primary,